I have called to order this regular meeting of Lennox Township Board Trustees Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the public meetings. I am motioned to the flag of the United States of America and to the President of the Province of Kansas City, one nation under God, the municipal with liberty and justice for all. Approval meeting agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, as one lay known that I would like to add has a point of discussion or issue you would require for, and that would be, that would be the payment of inspectors when they have to do co-enforcement and safety inspections.
All right, I believe that's under item I of new business?
Yes. We have no other additions, so I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended. Second?
I am motioned by Kirk Candell, seconded by trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Approval of minutes.
I make a motion to be approved in minutes from August 7th, 2023, as written.
Second?
I am motioned by trustee Clifford, seconded by treasurer Hahn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Public announcements.
I have a public announcement. We are going forward with the community dinner for Lennox and New Haven on November 17th. It is a free community dinner. Just bring non-perishable items to stock the food pantry. It will be from 6:00 to 8:00 on the 17th of November at New Haven High School Cafeteria. And there'll be carryouts also available.
All right, any more public announcements? Hearing none. Public comment? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Linda Russell. I wasn't sure when we'd bring this up or not, but the solar panel ordinance, has that been getting worked on? Is that the second public comment or the first public comment? So I wasn't sure if there was any headway being made on the solar panel ordinance.
Any more public comment? All right. Item 7, consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board. It will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member on the board or public soul requests active prior to the meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion in consideration under agenda item number 8 below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority of all vote of those present and.
We have orders and bills this month. $698,917 that is to be paid, $2,346.55 which was paid during the month, for a total approval of $692,246.72.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda and orders and bills of the amount of $692,246.72.
Second?
I am motioned by treasurer Hahn, supported by Kirk Candell. Deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnle? Sorry, my bad. Reader?
Aye.
Dan Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item 10, new business. Item A, fire department, life safety ropes, church requests. White.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. Tonight, I come before you with a request that was put together by the fire department and, quotes, received by Sergeant Scott Yate with regards to replacement of some of our life safety ropes at the department. Life safety ropes, that'd be the rope that we use to actually kind of lower a person from, if you will, or make a rescue with. We only have a shelf left for 10 years. We have some that needed replacement. The old ropes can still be used for training and other utility. We just can't use it in actual rescue operations. The recommendation by Sergeant Yate was for purchasing these through a company called Hyman, which we use for other things at the fire department. They have some different colors that make it easier when you have multiple ropes strung out at an incident scene. And he thought that that was beneficial to the overall rescue operation. We did place these, this item, in our budget this year, knowing that these ropes need to be replaced, and therefore we recommend the purchase of 12 lengths of 300-foot rope from Hyman at $7,353. He had provided a very nice letter, kind of outlining, you know, why he felt that actually in this case, the highest bidder was the best option for the fire department.
I will make a motion that we accept bid number three from Hyman for 12 lengths of 300 feet, four different colors of rope, for a total cost of $7,353.
A second?
I am motioned by Kirk Candell, seconded by trustee Clifford. Deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnle? Aye.
All right. Item B, 2024 SMART contract and resolution. Mr. White?
Good evening, members of the board. Again, I'll make this fairly brief, but I want to take a minute to introduce, I got to introduce to some of the board, but the members of the public and those watching from home tonight. I'm going to introduce Bonnie McInerney. Many of you remember over the years that Macomb County has always had a community embers person. That's the person that I deal with at SMART with regards to the service that we operate with our small buses. That community embers person retired. His name is Fred Barberett. He'd kind of been a fixture at SMART for a number of years. Bonnie took his place here after Fred retired. And so I want to make sure we introduced her tonight to the board as well. Tonight in front of you is the annual SMART municipal and community credit contracts. This is kind of an annual process where the board goes through and basically approves these community credits and municipal credits to go from Lennox Township to the Richmond Lennox EMS for the purpose of providing our small bus service. This year, those amounts are in $5,631 in municipal credits. Municipal credits come from the state of Michigan. They're kind of statutory in nature. They haven't changed for the last couple of years. They haven't gone up, they haven't gone down, but have remained somewhat static. There's $15,393 in community credits that come from SLRT. Those funds basically come out of the millage. It gets paid by our residents annually. And that's a portion of those that are returned to the community for operation of our small bus service. That did increase slightly this year. I can tell you that, you know, we, keeping just our numbers by year, in 2021, we provided about 453 rides in Lennox Township. In 2022, we provided 624 rides. And I think this year, we'll go well over 800, maybe even close to 900 rides here. Come out of the pandemic, the ridership has just ballooned in every community.
I see. We've seen it.
Yeah, sure. And so that's good news, that more and more people are riding. The little bit of bad news I have tonight is that we went out for, we actually ended up going out for bids on our insurance. We weren't due to go off for another year yet, but our insurance carrier increased our, just transit side insurance, not, they also increased EMS side of insurance, but our transit side insurance from $21,839 last year to $69,011 this year, a $47,000 increase. Basically, it was explained to us that they're in a hard market right now for insurance, and that there is an underwriter that a number of the municipal insurance carriers use the same underwriter, and that underwriter has come to a conclusion that community transit operations can be costly when there are accidents and other events that occur. And so they're considering it a bit more high risk to do. We went to five different insurance agents, and this company that we've used previously was still the best premium that we could get. So unfortunately, we do have, see a significant cost increase there, as well as all the other cost increases that really every, every business and organization are feeling right now, fuel, you know, personnel cost and everything that goes with it. So while we see, you know, it's nice to see a little bit of increase from SMART. We are seeing some increase in cost. We'll just have to watch our dimes and nickels go forward. With that, I simply ask the board to pass the required resolution and approve the contracts related to the SMART municipal and community credits.
I have Lennox Township Resolution Number 2023-7, resolution authorizing the use of 2024 SMART municipal and community credits. Authorization to purchase community transfer services from the Richmond Lennox EMS with SMART municipal credits and community credits. Whereas the township of Lennox is eligible to receive public transportation funds through the municipal and community credit programs. Whereas the Richmond Lennox EMS operates a public community transfer program. And whereas the township of Lennox wishes to purchase community transfer services from the Richmond Lennox EMS. And whereas SMART, the suburban mobility authority for regional transit, as the regional transportation authority, is responsible for coordinating, reporting, and dispersing of funds for all local subrecipient communities and agencies. And whereas our community and Richmond Lennox EMS have a longstanding collaborative relationship in providing para-transit services to residents in Lennox Township and the surrounding communities. Whereas our community, Lennox and Richmond Lennox EMS, wish to continue the existing arrangement and allow for direct reimbursement to the Richmond Lennox EMS for operating expenses incurred while providing community transfer services. And be it resolved that our chief elected official is authorized to execute municipal and community credit agreements in which municipal and community credit funds in the amount of $21,024, which is $5,631 in municipal credits, and $15,393 in community credits, will be used to reimburse Richmond Lennox EMS for para-transit, community transit services.
That sound like wrongful?
Couple. I'll make a motion that we approve Lennox Township Resolution 2023, the resolution authorizing the use of 2024 SMART municipal and community credits. I'll second.
I am motioned by Kirk Candell, seconded by treasurer Hahn. Deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
This is a two-part, right?
This is the, yeah, now we need to approve the contract. So I said all that to say this. I will make a motion that we approve the municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year 2024 as presented. Second?
I am motioned by Kirk Candell, seconded by treasurer Hahn. Deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, I don't know if Bonnie would want to say anything for a moment?
I just wanted to introduce myself. Again, my name is Bonnie McInerney. Feel free to contact me anytime that you guys have an issue or any problems. I'm happy to help you out.
Thank you. Thank you. It is, it is SMART contract season, so I have to get to 11 communities in the next few weeks. So I'm going to leave you at this point unless the board has any questions from me on other agenda items and up to Memphis where our SMART contract is also on the agenda. With that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to hear your comments.
All right, item C, public water main connection charge revision. Mr. Graybough?
Good evening. I was contacted by our contractor, Paymar, that does all of our water service installation work as well as water main repair, that our current contract with them needs to be updated, which has been sometimes since we've done so. They have provided us with a new schedule of costs to do these services, to install water mains as well as water services. Looking back, looking over our current schedule, working with our engineer, Mr. Safe, and myself, you can see before you, we've put together a new schedule of fees when somebody wants to connect to our water system. It does vary because by size as well as length, so we have come up with an average cost, depending on how that works out, as you can see by the schedule. So what I'm asking for is the township to approve this new fee schedule. It really needs our pass-through costs because of inflation and material costs that we've all seen over the last few years, basically updating our current.
After some discussion, I believe the motion is aborted.
I do have a question. I'm just assuming from what we're looking at that what this is telling us is no matter what size, it's going to be a $520 meter remote reader inspection fee?
No, the 520 is pretty, I'm able to give that number at this time, but for those larger meters, they keep changing so rapidly. I do not want to put a cost, so we'll call that the time of application to get that cost on that meter.
Okay.
Some of these meters, lead times are up to a year, believe it or not. So sometimes we have to go with a little bit different style meter, just because they're going to get it quicker than others. So to put a cost in there and be stuck with that, I don't think would be reasonable at this time.
Having no other questions, I will make a motion that the township approve the cost as listed on this letter signed by Sir Madden for public water main connection charges.
A second?
I am motioned by Kirk Candell, seconded by trustee Clifford. Deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item D, grant writer authorization request. Mr. Graybough?
Good evening, board. This evening, you're going to find a letter in your packet that was sent out via email, so that it was into the agenda packet. This evening, the supervisor's office is requesting approval for a grant writer to file for an attempted grant up to $2 million for the community senior sheriff's building. If this grant is in fact approved, we can provide an enhanced facility and have an improved shelter in case of severe weather added to the shelter we currently have here at town hall. That building is able to withstand the support of awesome shelter for the community. The way that building is constructed is, as we all know, phenomenal. The requested amount of 2,500 will cover the entire grant and allow the overall enhancement covering the entire renovation of the building for the community center, the senior project, and moving the sheriff's department. This will also allow us to add extra additional items needed for emergency coverage services, including generators and support power. If successful, this will cover the entire renovation, utilizing all the grant funds for the community project and recoup the entire amount that we're about to approve this evening back to the renovation. This evening, we're requesting the board to approve a request of 2,500 to Kerry Thompson and Kerry Grants Company. The EMS group has in fact used this person in the past with extreme success. Then I'll bring it back to the board for recommendation or approval. Let me, let me just follow up with this real quick. This is a federal grant that we are going for. This is an opportunity that we can utilize. State grant. Oh, it's state grant, I'm sorry. This is state grant, and I apologize, that is a limited selection of items. We fit that category, so the possibilities are extremely successful.
I will make a motion that we approve the grant writer request in the amount of $25,000. Second?
I am motioned by Kirk Candell, seconded by trustee Gurley. Deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item D, community center bid award approval. Mr. Graybough?
All right, good evening, board. This evening, you're going to find in your packet, as you haven't been able to observe, last week, August 30th, the supervisor's office is now in fact requesting the approval of the bid tonight and award the general contractor bid for the community senior sheriff building renovations. This has been a long time coming. We've worked very hard at putting this together. This bid went out August 1st on our website. It also went out to the state contractor's website. The results of the bid has gone out to four different companies, and only two of them, with only two of them following the requirements as required. The bids were required to be sealed and delivered to the township no later than August 24th and 12 noon. The bid opening was done August 29th with deputy supervisor and the township treasurer. Each of us went through verifying the company's requirements. Each company was required to participate in a walkthrough and submit any questions, clarifications to the architect. Both companies have done work for the township in the past and do have reputable work. Items required: sealed delivery on time. Both complied. Attend the pre-bid walkthrough. Both attended. Follow bid scope. Both complied. Produce bid documents as required. Both complied. Copies of builder's license were not required, but one of them, one of them did not produce the state license. Once all were reviewed and we processed the bids, they come back as follows. And as you can see within your packet, there's all the documents that were supplied from each bidder was copied for your reviews. Bid number one, which was received and opened, was from the Mulcah group for $765,152. Bid number two was from the Signature Builders, $515,250, with a $50,000 contingency fund totaling that bid to $5,650, excuse me, $565,250. I will tell you, as we went through this and we reviewed it, I appreciate the treasurer's honesty and thoroughness because she went through and verified, making sure what we were looking at as we went through each one. We, like I said, we've seen the work done, knowing both of them do great work. At this point in time, we are in fact requesting the bid be awarded to the low bidder of Signature Builders for $565,250. Keep in mind, the award of this bid means that the contract will be completed by February 15th. That building will be open by March 1st.
I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Graybough, when you sent this out, did you send it out early in August as an RFP, or did you bid it to the public?
We sent it to the public. It was out, put on the website. It was also put out on the state contractors list.
Okay. That being said, I mean, in my experience, and not that I'm an expert, but between the two bids, the 200, even with the contingency fund, the $210,000 difference is huge. And it makes me think that, there's nobody here from, say the term is something tonight, it would make me think that that big of a difference, either they missed something or we're about to get hit with some, I'm not saying they're dishonest, this is not what I'm saying, but there's a possibility there that we would get hit with change orders.
We look at the change orders.
Let me finish before you reply. And that being said, normally in a situation like this, in my experience alone, we would have a pre-award meeting with that contractor to make sure they didn't miss anything. Because I don't want to get hit with any change orders to bring this back up, because automatically they're going, oh, I might, I must have missed something. And just in glancing at this, Mulcah's, they included, and I don't know what the difference is there, but there was, they included a lawn sprinkler system. And looking at this, there's nothing there that describes what Superior Builders is providing. But that's just a small difference. And, but my, my thinking, maybe we need, and I don't want to hold this up, I really don't, but maybe we need to find out.
You mean we need, go ahead?
Meaning to table it and find out if they missed anything.
Mr. Clifford, respectfully, I'm going to ask that it not be tabled. I respectfully ask that you review the bids as we put them out. As you look, there is $25,000 bid for lawn sprinkling. That was not asked for. You're doing what? $50,000.
Well, I didn't say we did.
So we were very clear in what we put out on the bid scope. We were very, very clear on the bid scope.
I believe you were, but I'm just saying, in a bid that, a bid that difference, even with the 25 grand, that's still a huge difference and a bid is small.
So if you take $75,000 on that, because if you read the bid scope, as Kathy and I went through this very thoroughly and made sure that we looked at these things, we did not ask for that additional items. We asked for land.
I didn't, I was not saying you did. I'm just, the main thing here with me is, they, that's a big difference. And in my experience, they, usually that's because they missed something.
My experience, Mr. Clifford, respectfully, that means they didn't pay attention.
They what?
Did not pay attention. So if you'd like to, we can avoid and remove them from the opportunity. Because after going through this, we verified this very clearly. But that means they did not clearly verify or question the bid scope. They had every opportunity to reach out to us. And when you do see a $200,000 variation, either something's extremely wrong, or someone doesn't know how to calculate the cost of materials and time, or they're overbidding it. We have the opportunity and we have seen both constructions being done. EMS buildings were done by the Mulcah group. Macomb Township recently had Signature Builders do their senior building and other buildings. Macomb Township recently had Signature Builders do their senior building and other buildings. They also did Harrison Township. So they do have a pretty clear.
That's all well and good, I didn't know that until you were telling me that.
No one called me or questioned me, Mr. Clifford.
No, I went by what you had here, but normally, you would have a pre-bid meeting, a pre-award meeting to interview before you award 90% of the time. That's, that's all I am saying.
Any other questions, your comments? With that, I'll bring it back to the board for entertainment.
I will make a motion to approve the low bid from Signature Builders to repair and rebuild the community center at the cost of $565,250. I will support.
I have motion by treasurer Hoddle, supported by court Candell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Ponnell?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Nay.
All righty. Item F, Recreation Department Truck and Truck Treat Event Proposal. So this one comes up as Mr., I can't remember his last name, but the owner of the Pops Sweets and Treats and Pops Sweets on the Streets food truck came to the township, had a meeting with myself, Mr. Grabow, and wanted to have a host a truck treat event here at the township. Now, he is known for doing his event in the city of Mont Clement, drawing a very large crowd. Now, the city of Mont Clement has had some issues in the past because of taking up parking space for other businesses, I'll just say it. So he came to the township, wants to have it here, and today we are bringing it to board for approval. As of right now, we know he plans to have a trunk or treat, awards for the vehicle, for the trunkers, and having a scary movie as well.
How scary a movie?
Child-friendly.
Just so that I asked. Now, I had heard something about possibly wanting, since they were bringing the food truck and they were the people that were doing the event, that we might possibly be talking about relinquishing our admin fees for food, on food truck ordinance? Is that still the case?
I don't have a problem with that. Seeing that we're going in partnership, this would bring us some nice publicity. It would also be a good gesture on our side.
They would still pay the other fees, though. We're just talking about the $50 admin fee. There's still a fee for, for the.
The fireworks.
Right, so you're just talking the admin fee?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I don't really have a problem with doing that. It would be nice to get somebody to do that kind of thing in the park.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about organizing it.
I will make a recommendation that we approve the proposal for the trunk or treat event by Pops Sweets and Treats, eliminating the administration fee on the food truck ordinance.
I will second.
I have motion by court Candell, second by treasurer Hoddle. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Ponnell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, item G, 250-year Independence Day Celebration Committee Proposal. Mr. Grabow?
All right, good evening, board. Once again, coming forward to the entire board from the supervisor's office, there was a meeting held between the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce and the New Haven Village President. This evening, we're bringing this proposal forward to create a joint America 250 Michigan Committee between Lennox Township and the village of New Haven to coordinate and organize a celebration of our nation's 250th Independence Day. We have a unique opportunity here to be first, to be the first community in Macomb County to do this. And with this, we do have the opportunity to be the leader for this celebration, as well as have the first chance of sponsorships for this event. Tonight, the supervisor's office is asking the board's approval on the attached resolution and composition, along with a meeting scheduled for the committee. A similar resolution will be in front of the village council at our next meeting of New Haven. Do you care if we can read the resolution?
I will read the resolution if you want me to. This is the first I'm seeing it, so.
I.
Okay, here we go. This, I believe, is going to be, if passed, resolution number 2023-8, a resolution relating to the formation of a local America 2000, or 200, 250 Michigan Committee. A resolution of Lennox Township Board of Trustees located within the state of Michigan, supporting the Michigan Committee for the United States Semi-Quincentennial. There we go. America 250. Whereas Michigan Governor appointed the Historical Society of Michigan in the Michigan History Center to create and lead America 250 Michigan in 2019, to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States and Michigan's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. Whereas, America 250 Michigan hopes to engage all Michiganders in all 83 counties through their many signatures and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the next several years by inspiring future leaders and celebrating all Michiganders' contributions to the nation over the last 250 years. And whereas, Lennox Township and the village of New Haven will form a joint local America 250 Michigan Committee. Whereas, the local committee will plan and coordinate programs occurring within the locality and communicate regularly with America 250 Michigan and submit relevant and applicable events through the America 250 Michigan website. Whereas, the local committee will agree to follow the branding and planning guidelines set forth by America 250 Michigan and the America 250 Foundation where applicable. Whereas, the board of trustees and the village council wish to undertake this endeavor with America 250 Michigan to promote and commemorate this important historic milestone. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of trustees of the township of Lennox, one, the board of trustees hereby desires to support the Michigan Committee for the United States Semi-Quincentennial America 250 Michigan in their efforts to commemorate the 250th anniversary of the United States of America. Two, Lennox Township and the village of New Haven will form a committee to aid in the planning of a commemoration period made up of a diverse group of people to work with America 250 Michigan within their prospective town, city, township, county, organization, or other institution or group. Be it further resolved, the local committee must appoint a representative to liaise with the state committee. This representative will attend all local committee meetings and report to the state committee on a quarterly basis. I get it. Now, I do have a question on this joint committee.
Uh huh.
And that's that, we're inviting one member of the New Haven Community Schools Board of Education. What about the other three educational facilities we have? And you got Anchor Bay, you've got Romeo, or Richmond, and you've got Armada. We're not, are we not inviting any of them to participate?
So seeing how we're partnering with the village of New Haven, it makes sense to have one central school district, and that would be New Haven Community Schools. Richmond will most likely partner with the city of Richmond. Armada will most likely partner with the village of Armada. Anchor Bay's.
Do we know that all these people are joining us? I mean, you can say, you know, that we think that Richmond schools would partner with the city of Richmond, but do we know that the city of Richmond is forming one of these committees?
We are the first, like I said, like Mark said, we are the first Macomb community to do this. That being said, over half our population also resides within New Haven Community Schools.
I understand that. I just think that we're leaving three other school districts out, that we have citizens within our boundaries that pay attention to those.
We reached out to Anchor Bay, Richmond, and Armada before, and they have returned nothing to us on different items.
But I just think.
They constantly ignore this township whenever we try to reach out.
I just don't believe that we should just put the, with the New Haven schools on about some indication that we're inviting the others. If they don't respond, they don't respond, then at least we reached out.
This is something that has to pass both Lennox Township and the village of New Haven. I don't, I can't speak for the village, but I don't think they would like other school districts coming in and having a voice in.
I don't like us not allowing the other school districts in if they want to be. So I, this is a wonderful worthwhile cause. I don't believe that this proposed committee composition is correct.
When you, you guys went to a meeting, the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce was there, am I wrong?
Yes.
What did they pick up, or like, she's talking about the Anchor Bay School District, or?
No. They just 100% on board with us on this, though.
The Chamber of Commerce did, right?
Yes.
Yes, but I, I have no qualms with them. My only issue is, even if they don't respond, we should be including our other school districts. We cannot in any way, in my opinion, make those residents who have children in Armada and Richmond and Anchor Bay feel as though, feel as though they don't matter to this community.
They very much do matter, and we have, like I said, we have reached out.
Okay, but we didn't reach.
And Richmond, multiple ties.
But we didn't reach out to them on this. That's all I'm saying. We did not reach out to them on this, and I think we should.
A suggestion from the floor, Mr. Supervisor, reaching out to the village president, Brian Meissen. But I think if we at least go ahead and send a letter of engagement and ask them if they're interested, and if they know, we add it to the packet and we move on. But I'd be more than willing to reach out to those districts again. I am the one that does in fact reach out to those districts, and I will support the supervisor and his answer. We've gotten no response, but we'll at least give them a chance. Do you, do you think Mr. Meissen would be conducive in that? I mean, we could move forward with that opportunity.
I'm sure he'll have no problems reaching out. He just, there are those in village council that he has to get this past.
I just don't feel like I would want to approve this until I know that we have at least contacted those other school districts and, you know.
One, let me come back one second there. I don't think we've actually sent this out yet to them. This is a request to be able to do this. Respectfully, we have not sent anything out to these folks yet. So if you're asking us to add it, we could do that. And in fact, like the village president, no, we are adding them. We are the first ones to set this resolution. This is not, this is not set in stone. We've reached no one. This is our request.
If a resolution is one thing, the committee makeup is another.
Right, this is our request.
My other question on the committee is, we're looking for, to add representation from Haven Place to this committee.
That's because the state committee wants a community local nonprofit involved. And Haven Place is the only one around with that big of a name.
This is open for discussion. I mean, this is, this was a recommendation put together by the office of those people, so it's, that's wide open for discussion and, and make those offers. I'd be more than happy to do it if they're so directed. I can reach out to each superintendent of the other three districts.
So what happens if we don't approve this tonight? If I sit here and make a motion to table it? We still have time, correct?
What would you be tabling? Would you be tabling the makeup and the meeting dates, or are you tabling the entire thing?
I don't particularly want to table the entire thing, but can we just table the?
Can you allow me to go out and get the additional and see if we get it? So you could split this into motions.
We can just table this. I'm just trying to see what the resolution I just read said. I can read the words, doesn't mean I know what it said. It really says Lennox Township and the village, village of New Haven will form a joint local Mr. Addus, would it be unusual to approve the resolution and not approve the committee members until that's figured out?
Well, this happens what, once every 200 years, so.
You've gone a lot along here, haven't you?
Pretty close. I'm sure you feel like it last night. I don't know if it's usual or unusual, or wouldn't be illegal. Could split the resolution, you could table the resolution for a specific period of time, send out the invitation, and whether they come back or not and find out that way. But if you wanted to, to say, we're going to form the committee, as I understand that New Haven's part of this with New Haven and whatever, and leave it open to add people by invitation, you could do that. And then? And I understand that would take the approval of your partner, the term partner, would take the approval of New Haven to do that also. So let me see if I get this right. If you point it, you in New Haven, you start it, you approve it, you're going to go with it with the caveat that we are going to, to propose that others who may want to join should contact us and let us know within X number of business days, 30 days, 15 days, whatever. If they don't respond, you have your proposal, you have your committee. If they respond, you're going to have to let other people in, you're going to have to make some other decisions and amend it perhaps.
you're going to have to make some other decisions and amend it perhaps.
Specifically to the representatives of the school districts is what she's looking for.
Well, and my answer would stand. Send a school district notification. We've got New Haven, we've got this, anybody else who'd like to join, you've got to let us know, and we're going to move forward.
If that's the case, then I will make a motion to approve the committee and the resolution leaving committee members open so that we can send out invitations to others to see if they would like to participate.
From the schools? Or others?
Well, particularly the schools. But I think if somebody from a nonprofit that we don't know about, interfaith community or whatever, came and said, hey, we want to join in, we wouldn't say, oh, no, Haven Place is the only one allowed.
Was there a caveat, Mr. Supervisor? At least one? I don't remember. It did say at least one nonprofit. So yeah, the opening was there, okay. We can do that.
I'll second that.
I have motioned by Court Manow, seconded by Treasurer Holland. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Kandell?
Aye.
Huddle?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All righty, item H, November Board of Trustees Meeting Start Time on which request, Madam Clerk?
November 6 is the board meeting. It was November 7, we have an election. So we would like to propose that we move the time of the November 6 board meeting to 4 o'clock so that we have time to get things ready for the election the next day.
I second that.
That was a motion while she said it.
Was that a motion?
I didn't hear her say a motion.
Okay, so I have motioned by Court Manow, seconded by trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Kandell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Huddle?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item I, Inspector Payne's question, Madam Clerk?
We have had some major code enforcement items in the past couple of months for which we have had our building inspectors go out and spend extra time with inspections and writing letters, and in particular, our electrical inspector. So we are looking for, first of all, our electrical inspector has sent me a bill for additional hours that he worked that are outside the scope of what his contract says. The contracts right now do not mention or even talk about any additional code enforcement or public safety type of inspections that they go out on. So they're not getting paid for any, anything right now. So I just kind of want to put it in front of the board that we need to, number one, review the contracts and make changes to them so that when these guys have to go out and inspect a building that's doing something illegal or whatever, their time is compensated. Because right now, there's nothing in their contracts to compensate them for that kind of time. So just opening, you know, just kind of letting everybody know and opening it for discussion that the contracts need to have another clause put in them. Because our electrical inspector worked a lot of hours on a couple of items that are hanging out there.
Have we used, have we used the Sheriff's Office on some of those things?
Yes.
I do recall back a few years ago.
Yep.
We escorted due to the, to the nature of the combatants.
Yes, yes. Yes, that has happened recently.
Has it?
Yes. So in the meantime, I have a bill from our electrical inspector for $1,120 in additional pay. He's requesting for all the extra time that he spent on these last code enforcement items. So I need permission to go ahead and pay him. And then we need to have an open discussion about changing the contracts so that they do reflect a payment for that extra time.
That payment would never be reimbursed because there's no commencement bill.
That's correct. And then he called me and said, I'm having a problem here because I've spent all these hours that I'm not getting paid anything for. Because it's not related to a building permit. So we're not collecting any money, and I'm not getting paid any money. To that, I responded, well, that hardly seems fair. Do me a favor and estimate the number of hours that you think you spent on inspections and paperwork and follow-up and all that kind of stuff, and send me a bill so that I can take it to the board. So it kind of opened our eyes to a couple of things that we didn't know.
Do we go after damages in code enforcement?
I suppose if we went to court, we would go after costs, but yeah.
Yeah, I know for our attorneys, but I'm just... In view of costs associated.
No.
Would you like to head on to that one?
You could head, you could, if you go to court, you do, yeah, okay? You could certainly ask the court to award costs, okay? Will the court approve costs? This district court won't. At least that's been our history. If we're in circuit court, the circuit judge, angered enough by the wrong party, might award his costs. Those costs could include reimbursement for inspectors. Inspectors go out to support us in court, and we have to go there. These are people arguing about what's going on in their buildings. So they do provide a great service to us, okay? The point is, can we ask for costs? If we litigate it, we can ask for costs. And it's up to the judge whether or not he wants to grant them or not. There are no automatic costs involved.
So maybe what...
I suppose we could try to go back and invoice the person, but they're already mad at us for going after them.
That would have to be awarded in court costs.
Yeah, we're not going to, they're not just going to automatically write us a check and say, gee, I'm sorry, you know? That's going to happen.
Well, maybe what we should do right now is authorize the pay and then have the attorney draft language for us by the next board meeting.
That's right.
For us, the local...
Yep.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
I have motion made by the Chair, seconded by Treasurer Holland. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Huddle?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All righty, public comment?
Excuse me? The trunk or treat, is that on Halloween night or a different date?
The 21st of October.
Thank you.
Call from the board? All right, here you go, the adjournment.
I will motion to adjourn at 7:28. Second.
I have motioned by Treasurer Holland, seconded by trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Director?